I'm sorry Kendra, let me yell out.
You're fine.
I just realized it was time.
You're fine. That's not yelling to me.
Are we on? Kelly, are we on?
Yes, sir.
We're all. Good evening, Washington courthouse. It is seven thirty PM on February eighth, twenty twenty-three. Time for the first meeting of the month, first regular meeting of the month. At this time, I have the invocation and Mr. Schultz will lead us in the ledge. If you're able, if you can stand, that would be great. Dear God, we just thank you for the blessing of being able to serve this community and the people who live in it. God, we take that blessing very seriously. And so we ask tonight that you give us the wisdom and the heart and the soul to do what's best for this community and the citizens who live here. And if you do that, I think we will all be better off. And especially if we do it in a way that will honor you. And we pray all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Kendra.
Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have two sets of minutes, three sets, I'm sorry, of minutes from last month with all of our special meetings. The first one is the regular council meeting, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Did anybody see anything in that that needed to be changed? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next is our special meeting, the next day, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Did anybody see any problems with that?
I'll make a motion for us to accept January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. And finally, the day after that, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, we had our third meeting. Does anybody see a problem with that?
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes as printed here.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
Reports of council committees, I believe we have two. First would be economic strategies and cooperation, and that would be Ms. Hernandez.
All right. The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the city council chambers at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at five PM. I presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, economic development director, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. Number two, the committee noted the status of various development projects within the community and downtown area. Mrs. Baker noted that there were forty-one open projects. Let me repeat that. Forty-one open projects. Number three, the committee benefited from a review regarding downtown events. Mrs. Baker noted that the Main Street Board had a meeting on Monday, January twenty-third to discuss open board positions and downtown event schedule. Number four, the committee was advised that Farm to Fork was confirmed to be held downtown in two thousand twenty-three. Number five, the administration advised the committee of a new business interest in the downtown area. Number six, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. The committee noted interests from the community. Number seven, the administration advised the committee that the new color chart was in the final stages of completion and would be presented to the historic district and review board. Number eight, the committee benefited from a review of Business Advisory Council, BAC, updates. Number nine, the committee noted upcoming business retention and expansion, which is a BRE, visit with Red Collar Hill Nutrition. Number ten, the committee noted that two new business plaques were presented in December and January and that three more would be presented in the upcoming weeks. Number eleven, Mrs. Baker encouraged new businesses to reach out to her directly so that she and Mr. Denon could formally welcome them to the community. Respectfully submitted, myself, chairperson, and Ms. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Thank you Kendra. Does anybody have any?
On this one?
I think I was there.
Okay.
I was asking myself the same question.
I was there and I started a meeting at five o'clock.
I was sick.
And Chelsea was walking in. I think you came to the one after this.
Okay, well, I may have not been. I don't know. But I was thinking I did because I reviewed it, remember it.
I think she did make it in.
I think I came in late. Was I late?
She attended.
Yeah, but I think.
I think you came, yeah, you came in a little bit after we started.
But you're right, Caleb. I think you started, but I think she did.
Yeah.
Anyway.
We'll change it that she was present.
Does anybody have any other questions about economic strategies?
I have a comment.
Go.
Number eight and number nine. I appreciate the fact that you didn't just use abbreviations, you read out the full name. Because I always.
Kelly printed it that way.
Half the time, I can't remember what those abbreviations stand for and I appreciate it when it's the whole thing's written down.
I write them out for you after I get a draft of the minutes, Ted, then. And then she changes it.
Very good. Anything else? Does someone want to make a motion to accept those minutes?
After all the discussion, I guess we're finished? Sure. Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept those minutes.
Second.
Thank you. And roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next, we have finance and personnel. Mr. Blair, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance and Personnel Meeting held January the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Finance and Personnel Committee met in the lower level conference room, one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, January the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at six PM. Myself presided and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Ted Hawke, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Ms. Kendra Hernandez. Sound about the way you do it, Ted?
Hernandez.
Yeah, you didn't get it quite right, but hey.
Council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Christina Collins, finance director, Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager, and Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney. Number one, the committee benefited from a report of the statement of cash for the month ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Number two, the committee benefited from a report of the investments of the City of Washington courthouse. Number three, Mrs. Collins advised the committee that citizens can file income taxes online. Number four, Mrs. Collins advised the committee that reconciliation was being completed and Mrs. Collins reported on the reconciliation process. Number five, the committee benefited from a report of personnel issues given by Mr. Denon. Mr. Denon advised of the hiring process for the police, fire, service, and code enforcement departments. Number six, the administration advised the committee of a potential purchase of property. And lastly, the committee reviewed a draft ordinance pertaining to poultry and rabbits. Numerous citizens addressed the committee expressing their desire to keep chickens and poultry. Respectfully submitted, myself, chairperson, finance and personnel, and Mr. Joe Denon recorded the minutes.
So, how many mistakes did Mr. Denon make? Do we have any changes?
Yes, there is one change.
Oh, okay.
Unless there's a room above this. Says the Finance Personnel Committee met in the lower level conference room.
Mr. Denon, you messed up.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ted. He is, that's good. Okay, other than that change, is there anything else? Does someone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion. Sorry, we're over here.
That's okay.
Second.
Thank you.
We're challenging our memory over here.
Uh, roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. And we have an extra added attraction tonight. Mr. Hawke, we have a Service Safety and Recreation Committee minutes from our special meeting. You want to re-dose?
Yes, I hate to burst everybody's bubble, but this is gonna be really short.
Okay.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Thursday, February second, twenty twenty-three at ten AM for a special meeting. Mr. Ted Hawke presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, the administration advised the committee of the need to purchase a new fire engine. Chief Downing advised the committee engine forty was inoperable due to a broken chassis. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council granting permission to the administration to enter into purchase agreement with Rosenbauer South Dakota LLC for the purchase of a new engine truck not to exceed three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and to execute in a financing agreement with community leasing partners for a five-year loan period. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawke, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
I think I was at that meeting, this meeting, but I wasn't listed because I didn't hear Hernandez correctly.
You, you, I think you were.
I was, so.
Kelly, would you add that Kendra's name to that and?
Caleb's got me over his head. It's in my memory.
Well, but at that meeting, this is correct, right? We didn't change the leasing until after this meeting.
No, we were moving along as fast as we can, so at that point in time, we had the offer from the One Bank. But since then, we, we had discussions with merchants, which is why you have a replacement piece of legislation.
But I mean, this one's not wrong.
No, it's not wrong. Yeah. Yeah, well, the day we just get this.
But you're right. It's now a different group, whatever. I don't, we can change it, but.
More right if we add Kendra's name and then it'll be right.
Because I remember asking him questions.
Yes. Yeah. No, you were here on this one. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Are they discussing the same thing?
Yes. So I guess, we're adding Ms. Hernandez to this, then I'll move that we accept this.
Well, we got, are we gonna, can we amend it and change it to Merchants Bank?
No. At the time that the report was made, that was the accurate plan. We actually did it that day. This is what we actually talked about. When you get to the legislation, I'll explain to you why we changed. That everybody. It was that day. This is actually when we did. That's what occurred on that day. Yeah.
Except Kendra was here.
I'll second it.
Okay. And roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Thank you, by the way, all three of you. Mr. Denon, you're up.
Oh, thank you. Uh, wanted to let you know, we had planning commission earlier in the week. Uh, we went ahead and inquired about the issue of Airbnbs or short-term rentals, however you wanna phrase that. Uh, the planning commission members had already thought about the issue. They had some thoughtful comments on it. Uh, we had a few people in the audience that expressed support for Airbnbs and then also support for Airbnbs, but ones that are appropriately regulated. But they are quite happy to undertake the work of looking at the issue and making some recommendations to, for you folks to consider. Judy Chapel, we've been working on the inside, doing some, some painting and refurbishment. Some of the plaster repair work took a little bit longer than we thought, but we've been doing it ourselves. So what will likely happen is that we stop at a logical point because we have some people that use the Judy Chapel, especially in the spring, and then return to paint the main part of the chapel, uh, in the fall. We've painted the side room and done our repairs there, the sanctuary area and the, the crypts where Dr. and Mrs. Judy are buried. Those all are completed. But we'll beg off of that shortly and then come back to it back in the fall and repaint the, the main part of the interior where you actually sit and pews. And would like to thank the staff of the cemetery for their work. It looks very nice. I'm very happy. Uh, we've been able to fix the natural gas rate commencing in April of twenty twenty-three, the period being April twenty twenty-three through October twenty twenty-four at point six one six nine per cubic foot. The following notice gets mailed to residents here in the near future, and I'm not gonna read that all to you, but that's the text of the letter that they will get advising them of the change. Uh, and we're very happy to be able to return to fixed rate. This winter is the only winter where we've been really, there weren't great options, so we had to go with a variable rate. But most people prefer the peace of mind of a fixed rate. Now, you can go back and forth and argue some winters would have been better, better off if you would have been variable versus fixed. You do pay, in a sense, for the peace of mind of that, that fixed rate, but we are happy to be able to do that. And again, that commences in April of twenty-three. Would like to thank Main Street Fayette. They have had several meetings lately and they are working towards a great year downtown and an incredibly nice group of very dedicated people that will be doing wonderful things for us. Uh, would like to thank the Ag Society for the Valentine's Day Dance at the Mayhem Building on February eleventh at seven PM. For tickets, call seven four zero three three five five eight five six. I'm sure when we're done, Ted Hawke will be rushing to a telephone.
I wanna see that. I wanna, now I wanna see him boogie.
Would like to thank the Carnegie Library for the Adult Spelling Bee that will be held this year at the Fire Department. Every year, the words are themed with the location, February tenth at six PM. I'm the pronouncer, so tomorrow, at some point in time, I need to read the words and go over that and make sure that I am ready to do that. That is a lot of fun for the people that participate in that. They have a very good time. Would like to thank, we'll go ahead and do it now. Uh, Merchants Bank and in particular Paul Pence, uh, they will be handling the financing of the fire truck. We're paying a hundred fifty thousand dollars down, uh, financing the balance of that for five years and what we were quoted, four point seven one percent, and they're, they're willing to do the same terms, no early prepayment penalty at four and a half. Uh, so we're very happy to be able to work with them and they have been an excellent community partner. And then that means that R-ten, twenty twenty-three, has changed to reflect Merchants Bank, and that is why that is in there and why that change was made. Everybody on the same page? Okay. That's everything I have.
Remind Jim, I have a question.
Do you know, I haven't been in Judy Chapel for years.
Uh-huh.
I think it's the first time I was chairperson, I was in there.
I was in there today.
About how many does that seat?
Ooh.
Off the top of your head, ten, thirty? I don't know.
No, probably two hundred, maybe.
Is it that big?
Well, you're, you're packed in there. You got those little pews and you don't have a whole lot of leg room. At, at least one fifty, I'd say.
One of my granddaughters was married there, here. She was married, uh, in that Judy Chapel here a few years ago. Brittany.
I would say probably you do one fifty in there.
People there, so.
Okay.
Well, I was just curious, in case I want to have my service there, I wanted to make sure there's room for both of my friends.
Both my friends.
There'd be playing room, Jim. Now, I'm incredibly pleased with the, the work at the Judy Chapel. It's been very slow, but they have done a nice job and that, what we've done is it looks much better and we'll complete that in the fall. And in the spring, we'll get, that has a fair amount of use in the spring. Been a little bit slower than we thought, but we've been marching along.
How long has that Judy Chapel been there? When was it originally built?
Off the top of my head, I think nineteen oh eight.
Okay.
If you would have asked that a couple of months ago when I was on the cemetery tour there, I'd, I'd had that all memorized.
Yeah, I guess.
But I think it's three years after the house was built, so it should be nineteen oh eight. Uh, its original purpose, Dr. Judy was a doctor, medical doctor. Don't know how good a doctor he was, because he made the observation that when his patients died, that they sometimes didn't have a home large enough to accommodate the funeral because then it was common for the funeral service to be held in the home. So the purpose of the chapel was to accommodate funeral services for folks where the home wasn't large enough or, or they wanted to do that in a different location. And ironically, about the time it was completed, is when the funeral home concept began to, to catch on and become popular.
Maybe it was the head of his time a little bit.
Yeah, and that had to be like pre-planned out because, uh, the construction period from when he died to when you have chapel is, is relatively short. That stone was all shipped in from either New Hampshire or Vermont. I can't remember. So that had to all be pre-planned out before his death.
What's the charge, Jim? The charge to rent that, how much?
Uh, off the top of my head, Jim, I can't tell you. We charge for, like if somebody has a wedding there now, if it's a community nonprofit organization that has a meeting there, typically we don't. But off the top of my head, Jim, I'm not sure.
What is the status of, uh, the, um, chicken and rabbit draft?
Chicken and rabbit draft? Uh, I made some more changes to it and Mark has it. So then I think that we are supposed to bring the chicken ordinance, chickens, ducks, and rabbits to your next Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, I think that was the plan.
Yeah.
Will the bees also?
Uh, we haven't made progress with bees.
Gotcha.
But, but we.
The spelling ones.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've stuck to mammals and fowl at this point, so we'll, we'll move on to insects here in the near future.
Anything else? I told my students I think I'll vote against the chickens and they're gonna protest and walk out of my class. I'm not, but I just told them. They like chickens for some reason.
Well, chickens are, you can need to give chickens a chance.
Chickens a chance.
Give them a chance.
Chance at chickens.
Okay, anything else?
Chelsea needed a slogan for the city.
Let's give chickens a chance.
It might be.
There you go. Okay. Well, I think the Director of Finance is not here and the Attorney for the City, I believe, is on vacation.
Yes.
I have no one signed up to speak. So, yes, we can go to me home. You came in kinda late. Did you want to speak? Or you just?
No, I'm just checking it out.
We love it when people come.
My son keeps telling me, Mom, you gotta check it out. So I'm here. If I have any issues, I'm sure.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, my information, I don't wanna ramble. I wanna make sure I get my facts out.
All right. Okay, then we're ready for legislation previously introduced. We have several. And starting with Resolution number R-one, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move it with like Resolution number R-one, twenty twenty-three, on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Hernandez.
Yes.
Ben Johnson.
Yeah.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number R-one dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, for his designated need to enter into an agreement with E M H and T Engineering Incorporated for engineering services.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. First thing you'll notice about city council is we get along a lot better than Congress. Okay, Resolution number R-two, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move we put Resolution R-two, twenty twenty-three, on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R-two dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Fire and Safety Services Incorporated for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for the Washington Fire Department.
I'll move for adoption on that.
Second.
Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Uh, the amended Resolution number R-three, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move that we place amended Resolution number R-three, twenty twenty-three, on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Amended Resolution number R-three dash two thousand and twenty-three, amended Resolution directing Joseph J. Denon, City Manager, to present to the Planning Commission of the City of Washington Courthouse the question of the appropriate regulation of Airbnb facilities within the corporate limits of the City of Washington Courthouse and reporting on the recommendations of the Planning Commission to the City, to the City Council within six months.
I'll make a motion that we put, uh, Resolution R-three, twenty twenty-three, amended Resolution on first reading, second?
We adopt. Adoption.
Adoption?
Yes.
Okay.
Adoption. Okay. I'll second that.
All righty. Roll call, Kelly.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Resolution number R-four, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move that we place Resolution number R-four, twenty twenty-three, on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R-four dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution accepting the body worn camera grant body borne camera grant for the Washington Courthouse Police Department.
Move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Resolution number R-five twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move we put resolution R-five twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R-five dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution accepting the American Rescue Plan Grant for the purpose of hiring and retention of personnel for the Washington Courthouse Police Department.
I'll move for adoption on that. Second.
Roll call.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Then our new legislation, starting with resolution number R-seven twenty twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R-seven twenty twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R-seven dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Reichardt Ford for the purchase of two two thousand twenty-three Ford F-one-fifty pickup trucks.
Resolution number R-eight twenty twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move we put resolution R-eight twenty twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R-eight dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Reichardt Ford for the purchase of two two thousand twenty-three Ford F-two-fifty pickup trucks.
Resolution R-nine twenty twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R-nine twenty twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R-nine dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Reichardt Ford for the purchase of a two, 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 I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-three Ford F-one-fifty Super Crew pickup truck.
Easy for you to say, isn't it?
You've read a lot tonight, Kelly. Finally, Kelly, resolution number R-ten twenty twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution of R-ten twenty twenty-three on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R-ten dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution also authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Rosenbauer South Dakota LLC for the purchase of a Rosenbauer fire apparatus for the Fire Department and authorizing the execution of finance arrangements with Merchants National Bank.
Yay, good job, Kelly. A lot of reading. Okay. Let me start in the middle this time. Ms. Hernandez, what have you got for us?
Just the usual, there's a shop hop Friday in celebration of Valentine's Day, so I'd love to see faces down there, it's, I think, our first true shop hop of the season or the year, so, um, we appreciate any kind of patronage there could be, that's it.
I don't think it's gonna snow, either.
Oh, I do wanna say something too, but you all give me a rough time.
Okay, go ahead.
So I, I usually don't talk about my, my children or grandchildren, which I don't have yet, Ted, but I am so proud, my child is on the seventh grade Miami Trace basketball team and they went undefeated and turned around and won the championship tournament, so, um, they're pretty high, high in the sky right now, but I'm proud of them, they worked really hard and there's fifteen boys on that team, and, you know, only five start, and every one of those boys cheered each other on and acted as a team and never complained, the coach did a great job, and it was just a huge learning experience for, I think, all of them, and I was just proud of their attitude, there wasn't fighting, there wasn't bickering, he gets to play before me, it was just a really enjoyable season as a parent, so, go Trace, sorry, Dale. Kelly's right with me.
Has Kendra said anything yet?
Oh, I read all of it. All of it, right? I'm gonna have like two paragraphs.
I think your name is left off before.
Oh, it won't be left off this time.
Mr. Hawke, what have you got?
That's very good, that's very good.
You know he practices all this out.
Yes, I know he does.
Mr. Hawke is up.
I just wanted to say that my granddaughter is also from the seventh grade girls' basketball team at Miami Trace.
Oh, goodness.
They didn't do so well this year, but they were the better team most every time, they just, the refs were terrible.
There we go.
Are you from Greenfield, that sounds like Greenfield fans.
They were playing, it seemed like they were playing five on their team and seven on the other team, but anyway. I also wanted to say that I really am truly falling in love with my wife, so, you know.
You'll be there Friday.
I, I get all these disparaging remarks about how I treat her, but I, as far as I'm concerned, I think I treat her pretty good, so, anyway, she's a great woman.
What are you getting her for Valentine's Day, a new hoe for her garden?
I, I'm working on it.
He's working on it.
I wanna get her something she can really use.
Real nice this year, something real nice.
Okay, Mr. Christman, what do you have? This oughta be good.
I'm gonna pass, I can't keep her.
You can't keep up with that.
I'm still thinking about Judy Chapel.
Mr. Johnson, what do you have?
Well, it's my understanding that Ms. Hernandez has a busy week ahead of her, so I won't keep her any longer tonight.
Thank you.
Good point.
That's a good point.
Mr. Schultz?
Well, you know, I also had a granddaughter play basketball, and they all showed up for the games, that's all I can say. They had a decent season, but also, I wanna thank Mr. Lynch. Mr. Lynch, my grandson, if you noticed in the paper, my grandson signed up to go to college at Baldwin Wallace yesterday. And there's an article that my grandson wrote in here, and he put in here, Mr. Lynch, he asked him to be at the signing, and one of the things he said, he ended with saying thank you to a lot of people, but he also said he, Mr. Lynch is his favorite teacher, so you had a lot in helping raise my grandson, whether you know it or not, so I wanna thank you for your participation in that signing yesterday, it was a lot of folks, a lot of coaches, a lot of kids, and Mr. Lynch showed up, so it turned out, he turned out very well, it turned out good.